Good evening. I call this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education Order and declare a quorum. This evening, we have a first grade student at Greenbrier Elementary School, Kailash Reddy, who's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Kailash?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kailash, welcome. We have two beautiful ladies with you this evening. Would you like to introduce them to us?
Yeah. My mom and my principal.
Your mom and your principal, and their names?
Um, Kailash Reddy and Discover.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. We talked a little bit before our meeting started, and you shared with me that you're missing something this evening to be here. What is it that you're missing?
Um, Taekwondo.
But I hear from mom that you have some other opportunities to go there. How many times a week do you go?
Four.
And how many years have you been doing this?
Um, a few months.
Oh, just a few months. Okay. And is that something you enjoy?
Yeah.
And when you were in school, what things do you like?
Um, social studies, um...
Mom looks proud.
Is there something special about Greenbrier that you enjoy?
Yeah.
What would that be?
I like to be around my friends and have a good teacher. That's the thing I like about Greenbrier.
That's so very good to hear. You're surrounding yourself with good people.
Yeah.
So anything you'd like to ask any of us this evening?
Not really.
Not really? Nothing you want us to know?
Ask him if he lost his teeth doing Taekwondo.
Mr. Stauffer and Dr. Michael want to know if you lost your teeth doing Taekwondo?
Uh, no.
No? Totally unrelated, right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much for coming out this evening and for leading us in the pledge in a moment of silence. All the best to you. Okay, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda this evening? Okay, unanimous, motion carries. Next is the approval of our minutes. Someone have to ask?
Madam President, I move for approval of the work session minutes dated Tuesday, December 19th, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? All those in favor of approval of the minutes? Okay, it's unanimous.
Madam President, I move for approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, December 19th, 2017.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor? Okay, it's six and one abstention. Ms. Chekovik, there's a correction to the previous set of minutes. There should have been one abstention. Mr. Guessford was not here and was not voting on the minutes, and I overlooked his lack of a raised hand.
Madam President, I move for approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, December 19th, 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any additions or corrections?
Madam President, just a point of order. I'm sorry, go ahead and finish the motion, then I need to ask a question.
Okay, we had a second. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? All those in favor? Six, and are you abstaining from those as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Six enough approval and one abstention. Thank you. Mr.?
Just a question with the point of order. Excuse me. My understanding was that under new business, we were going to table the consideration board of education advisory committee appointments.
Uh, yes.
There needs to be an amendment to the agenda.
Okay. Would you like to do that? Would you like to?
Not particularly, but I can.
Would you like to offer that amendment?
Yeah. Okay, with that, I'd move to amend the agenda to table for the future, until the future, the first item, consideration board of education advisory committee appointments that were scheduled for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Reddner. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous, and that item of business will be tabled. Thank you, Mr. Reddner, for bringing that to our attention. At this time, we have public comment. We have no one signed up in advance to speak to the board. Is there anyone who did not have an opportunity to sign up who would like to come forward during public comment? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. We're excited tonight. We have several presentations. Our first presentation involves the Hagerstown Lioness Club. For many, many years, they have been participating in the vision screening for many of our elementary students, and we'd like to provide them an opportunity tonight to come forward and share a little bit about their work, and then we certainly want to honor them this evening. So ladies, if you come forward. If you begin by each one of you introducing yourselves, and then the floor is yours.
My name is Lioness Patty Kelly.
Lioness Mary Lipt.
Lioness Sandy Burns.
Lioness and first vice president Leslie Smith.
Lioness Ellen Gurkey.
Lioness and president Lily Forrest.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank Dr. Michael for inviting us this evening along with the board members so that we can share information with you about vision screening program that we've been providing to Washington County for 25 years. This was our 25th anniversary of supporting the county and our students, and some of the individuals who are not with us tonight, we often call our pioneers, who started the service about 25 years ago, including Lioness Marie Byers, May Crabbe, Doris Fisher, Betty Morgan, Sue Nelson, and Elaine Shane. And these ladies recognized at the time a need for us to provide this service when the health department stopped providing the vision screening to students. Our current chairs are all of us. We are all chair, co-chairs of the vision screening process that we provide. We've been doing this, as I said, for 25 years, and we do this during the months of September and October. It's a very quick process, and we provide the screening for grades kindergarten, first, third, fifth, and eighth grades. And we usually start right after, about a week after school starts for the new year. So what do we screen for? We screen, in kindergarten, we screen for acuity and muscle balance, which is also known as lazy eye. We've screened in first grade for acuity as well, and for third grade, acuity and far sightedness. For fifth grade, we also screen for color, and eighth grade, we do acuity. Based on the vision screening results, parents then are sent a letter from the school if a child has failed any of the screenings. So whether it was the acuity, the color, or the far sightedness, any of those screening tests, if they failed it, they will receive a letter. The Hagerstown Lioness Club provides funding for up to $125 for any family who needs help in paying for glasses. I'd like to say that, you know, we do receive some requests, and we have responded to those requests. We know that there's a greater need than the requests that we receive. I think some of the issues are probably that, in some cases, either they don't follow through, in some cases, they may have insurance, in some cases, the provider may actually provide good discounts. In 2017, the results are pretty staggering. We screened 8,951 students. Of those, 881 failed the test. They may have failed just one test. And then we had 160 who we could not test, and there are a variety of reasons why students may not have been, or why we would not have been able to test a child. In some cases, they may just be afraid, or upset, or emotional, and they don't want to be tested, and that's okay. In other cases, it may have been a lack of understanding of what the test is, regardless of our prompting and trying to help them understand. And we also do try to test our life skills students, but some of them are unable to do that. And then we had 346 students who were absent. We depend on volunteers, volunteers from the Hagerstown Lioness Club and also from the community. And we've been very fortunate that many of our volunteers are retired teachers, and some of them continue to recruit, or are retired teachers, so we are very fortunate to have that. We fill 266 volunteer schedules during September and October, and we completed 1,595 volunteer hours in 2017, just in September and October. The scheduling process is critical, and it's complex in the steps, but there are many contact steps in the process. We contact all the schools in July with vision screening schedules to select their preferred date. Leslie Smith is one who calls each of the schools, and most of the time, she's speaking directly to her principal. Sometimes it may be a secretary or a nurse, but in most cases, it's the principal directly. She then contacts them again to confirm the dates once all the schools have been contacted. And then critically, right before we get there, a few days before, she reconfirms a few days before the volunteers arrive, to make sure that we have the space that we need, the furniture, and the copies of the student list that are available for the screeners. And those lists are important because that's what we record the information on. And from there, that information then gets input into the system that the nurses have access to through Meredith. Equipment. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Due to our aging equipment over the years, the Washington County Board of Ed approved the purchase of two new TITMIS machines and two new Good Life machines. One of the things that tends to be a little complex is understanding that when we have two different types of equipment, the reason is that we use different types for different age groups. And when we come into a school, we are screening two different age groups at the same time. Several pieces of our equipment have been retired and weren't able to be serviced or repaired. They have been repaired a number of times in the past. New equipment allowed us to improve our efficiency. We are in and out of the schools typically before lunchtime for most of the small and the medium sized schools. The larger ones, it takes us a little bit longer, but we continue to improve our efficiency with the new equipment, and also allows us to improve or increase the number of screeners and reduce that time at the school. But we still need more equipment. Vision screening has been an investment in our children's vision health, and it's been really a labor of love for all of us. The Lionesses who volunteer, as well as volunteers from the community, really enjoy working with the children and providing this service. So we look forward to many more years of servicing our community and our children, and we thank you for your support in making this possible. And here's some of our volunteers. We can't take pictures of the children, but we can take pictures of ourselves, so that's what we do. So thank you again for inviting us tonight to provide some additional information and context to what we do every year, and we appreciate your support.
We appreciate you coming this evening, and certainly appreciate the thousands of hours that you've donated over the many last 25 years, and we appreciate your ongoing support for the future. It's a pleasure to meet with some of you, I guess it was maybe a month or so ago, and looking at some ways we can even improve the process from our side to make it even a better process for our students. I'm sure the ladies would be glad to entertain any questions from the board. If the board members don't have any questions, I do think we have something special we want to give you.
Ladies, thank you very much for your invaluable 25 years of service. It's remarkable, and much needed, and much appreciated. At this time, board member Mike Guessford has a presentation that he would like to make on behalf of the board.
Just a little something for all of the community for the school system. Commendation for a volunteer service presented to the Hagerstown Lioness Club in recognition and appreciation for more than 25 years of coordinating vision screening for the students in Washington County Public Schools. The superintendent of schools and Washington County Board of Education hereby commend the Hagerstown Lioness Club and Lioness Club for its continued commitment to children. Dated today, January 2nd, 2018, by the superintendent of schools, Dr. Ray Michaels, and the board of education members. Congratulations, and thank you so very, very much, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your continued support.
Thank you.
Well...
It's a group thing, collaboration.
Thank you so much. Wonderful to see you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. 25 more years. Go now. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Regent Farren and I report this evening. I'd like to ask members of our educational foundation to come forward, Ms. Williams and her team. If they would come up, they're going to share a little bit about what the educational foundation is all about, the role that they serve here for Washington County and for our students, what the volunteers do for us and things. So with that, Ms. Williams, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. I have a few volunteers with me today. Kevin Crawford from Hagerstown Community College, Ryan Flurry, Wells Fargo advisor, and one of our board members, principal at Pangorin Elementary School, Eric Meredith. I also have a few other board members here. Terry Baker, our board president, Glenn Singer, our past president, and Laura Barnes, our secretary. So the education foundation was established in 2009 by community members. It was in the former development office. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and the purpose of the foundation is to gather community resources to enhance what is happening in the school system. We are not duplicating anything, we are just enhancing what's already being done. We work hand in hand with many of the WCPS departments, including the college and career readiness, counseling office, and curriculum. This summer and fall, I had the privilege of meeting with about 80% of the principals in the schools to tell them who we are and what we do. The first staff person to the foundation, so it was really important to get out there, put a face to a name. I was on the board of directors previously, but I wanted to broaden our reach, find out other ways how we can help. Our most familiar program is our teacher grants, previously known as the mini grants. We've recently renamed this to the innovative grants to encompass more of what they reach. We have invested more than $100,000 into the classroom since 2009. Two years ago, we set up a maxi grant, which can be up to $5,000, and the mini grants can be funded up to $1,000. In 2017, we more than doubled the number of applications that we received for grants. We received 78 applications from the teachers. We were able to fund 13 of those for $15,000. If we could have funded them all, we could have put $110,000 back into the classroom. And this is not salaries, this is funding programs, things that teachers are asking for in addition to what's going on in the classroom. New this year, we are going to offer a Q and A or a basic grant writing training for the teachers the end of January so that they can have that resource to hopefully encourage even more teachers to apply for grants. I'm going to have Eric give just a brief statement. Some of his teachers from Pangorin have won this grant in the past.
Most specifically, this was what inspired me to come aboard and ask more questions about the organization when I met with Christina this summer. Last school year specifically, our technology resource encore teacher had been spearheading an initiative to get more technology into the hands of students through devices that are programmed through applications consistent with the iPads. And through this, the mini grant that he has received, one of the things that's so inspiring is when you really see physical material and stuff coming back into the hands of students and can be used on a daily basis to engage them and pique their interest, it's very exciting. So through the use of a technology encore class that we have where students are using coding programs with the iPads and Izobots to do really cool stuff along with their learning on a daily basis, thanks to the mini grant initiative, and our teacher, Mr. Hurley, our students at Pangorin are being very successful with this and advanced in terms of the application with technology.
That was a fun visit. I went and saw second graders with their iPads putting different codes for these little robots that are no bigger round than the size of a quarter to follow this coding around the iPad. So it was a neat visit there.
Sometimes when you say robot to a second grader, you got them hooked right away.
I am remiss, I forgot to mention that Linda has been serving on our board of directors as an ex officio, so we appreciate her as well. Sorry, I missed you first. Another program that we, as a foundation, saw a need for was increased financial literacy education. This came about in 2013 through a program called Glow. Does not stand for anything, it's just what the program is called. It's curriculum that a nonprofit in California established that we were able to purchase and use in our classes. The best fit that we found for this to enhance what's already going on in the classroom is through the AVID classes, the advancement via individual determination classes. We teach that, help teach it at North-South Smithburg and Williamsport in ninth through 12th grade. We have community members that serve as mentors in the classroom to go out and help the teacher present this information, anywhere from budgeting, savings, banking, credit, and then they build that into college and career. How are you going to pay for college? And really talking to those students about making that a possibility. We have had a total of 70 mentors since we established this in 2013. This year, we have 26 active mentors in the classroom. I know many of you are former educators, and you know students will pay attention more when someone other than the teacher is speaking. These two gentlemen, Kevin and Ryan, have been volunteers since the beginning, so we'll give Ryan a chance to just talk about being a mentor in the classroom.
So, you know, I try to show the kids and relate to them because it was only 15 years ago when I was at North High, and so it's kind of full circle when you come and you're teaching a course, you know, to the kids where, you know, you sat in a seat no longer, you know, not too far ago. But I think the biggest thing for me is we're able to give these kids access to information in a leg up, and they probably don't have access to a lot of the information that we're teaching them. I know that even when I was in school, a lot of the material, you know, was never really taught. I had to learn from either myself or my parents, and, you know, unfortunately for some of these kids, they don't have that same opportunity. So it's nice to be able to give back, but it's really cool when you get emails from the kids afterwards, and they say, oh, you know, I'm going to school, thanks for helping me apply for this grant, or hey, this is the course I'm taking, I'm going to college, and I'm studying finance, or whatever the case may be. And actually, a fellow mentor of mine actually told me that he receives hugs from some of his students in a form of thank you. So I haven't gotten any hugs yet, but, you know, 2018 is a new year, but it's a great program, and I'm happy to help out.
This year, we added a section to our website for the foundation to have contact information for our mentors so that the students can reach out to them if they need help with something or to follow up, to really make that connection and hopefully bridge beyond the classroom. Because as Ryan mentioned, a lot of these students are hearing this information for the first time. It's surprising when you go in and start talking about banking, and they have no idea about checking or savings accounts, so it's a vital program for them. Also in 2013, sorry, in 2014, the FAFSA Frenzy Program was established through Grader Hagerstown. This is something that our organization took over two years ago. It is community events. I know I've been here before to present when we have the winners of scholarships from this. We host community events to help students and their parents complete the FAFSA. The school system, the counselors do an amazing job tracking and finding these students who need help, but sometimes they need weekend hours for their parents to come get that additional help. The FAFSA is the free application for federal student aid, the starting point for federal aid, state aid, a lot of scholarships, and institutional aid. So it's vital if a student is thinking about, or should be thinking about, college or career training after school, to get that form filled out so that they know how they can pay for that opportunity. We've reached over 450 students in providing information or assistance in completing the form. We provide scholarship opportunity for any high school senior in the county that's completed the FAFSA by March 1st. Last year, we presented three scholarships. This year, we have funding for three, as well as additional funding comes in through the form of our sponsors. So so far this year, we'll have at least four scholarship winners. And I have Kevin Crawford here to talk about, he's a volunteer for the FAFSA Frenzy events as well as a Glow mentor.
You all probably know, you want to see a puzzled look from a family just mentioning FAFSA, and they've heard about it, or they remember doing that. It's a daunting task for a lot of families to do, and Christina and her staff do a wonderful job of having this event where parents and students can come and bring all their information, and we have staff that helps them complete the FAFSA. And it's a tremendous, a couple of weekends that we do it, and Washington County Public School counselors do a magnificent job of promoting the FAFSA with their students, but sometimes the family wants to come and sit down somewhere else. We've had it at the mall. It's been well received, but we're still trying to get the word out to have more families do it. So hopefully, as we move forward, this will reach out and touch more families to get the FAFSA completed, to see what funding's out there for them for college.
Another avenue with this in mind and goal is completing the FAFSA is providing college information earlier. So we've partnered with the Boys and Girls Club this year. We've had several events at the Elgin Station. I spoke with Rachel, who's the director at the Pennsylvania Avenue branch. We're going to help with a new program that they're launching. So really, just providing additional information about what are you going to do after high school to go into college or career and be ready for that. So it's really about just providing that additional information from one other avenue. Community support, we have received tremendous support from all the local colleges as well as several businesses, and predominantly this year, more of the banks have shown tremendous support in supporting the Glow Financial Literacy Program. That's right up their alley. Jagger James continues to be an amazing supporter of ours. The WCPS Employee Giving Campaign, we receive tremendous support and funding through that campaign each year. The majority of those funds go right back into the classroom in the form of the innovative grants. We always try to emphasize that because that's money that they're entrusting us to put back into the classroom. We continue to collaborate with WCPS staff, always with open arms. We're excited. Community support, we're going to host our first fundraising event this summer on June 15th. It's an event for mothers and sons. It's called Ready, Set, Play. It's going to be hosted at North High. Hopefully, the Friday after school ends, barring any snow days, but we'll have that. It's going to have indoor and outdoor activities and events and stations, and should try to raise awareness for the foundation as well, so that parents as well can see what we're doing to enhance the classroom. And here's just the highlight of some of the grants that we funded. 2016, we funded a project called the Butterfly Project at Washington County Tech High. It's the top one there. And then the bottom three pictures show from some visits of 2017 grant winners. So stay tuned, the grants, we award those in May. So stay tuned, the grants, we award those in May. We're excited, it's always a very fun day where we get to go out and surprise the teachers that win those grants. Hopefully, we can keep funding more and more because they do amazing things with that money in the classroom. So thank you again for having us. I'd be happy for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions? I'd just like to say that, that I am just astounded at the growth of the foundation in nine years. I can remember a time when there were few, if any, partners and we were relying on the contributions of our employees to fund mini grants and that as a member of the mini grant committee back then, we would have these amazing proposals, wishes come in and found ourselves wishing that we had more money to be able to fund all those wonderful ideas teachers have. And you've gone so far beyond those mini grants to be offering these wonderful things that are so invaluable to our students. So I think it's a wonderful thing and I think we're blessed to have this foundation supporting our school system. So thank you very much, mentors, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else?
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in tonight and sharing. I think we have a couple items of business and I have a few other things for superintendent's report after those items of business.
We have no old business this evening. And our first item under new business at this time is the consideration of the boards, or actually would be the superintendent's FY 2019 Recommended Draft Budget.
So earlier today, and in the, before the winter break, we had two work sessions where we discussed the superintendent's draft budget. The budget we requested at this time is $275,995,704. The budget, in creating the budget, through a lot of work here with staff, particularly Mr. Prue, Mr. Brandonberg, Mr. Sisler, as well as all the senior staff and many of the supervisors and content specialists, we made $2.2 million worth of internal cuts, non-personnel based cuts. We've expanded our footprint with pre-K programs for next year. We've tried to provide for a salary resource pool. We've identified funding, excuse me, we've identified funding for what we anticipate to be about a 5% increase in our healthcare costs. And also dealt with some specific needs regarding some special ed children, are increasing in this language learner population, the needs of some of our children for social worker, pupil personnel worker, and some other resources like that with redeploying staff. So at this time, we'd be glad to entertain any other questions the board might have. Again, we met today for over an hour and we met previously in December for an hour and a half or so regarding the budget. Obviously, this is still early in the budget process. We do know that there is some identified funding that will be required from the county. We're also anticipating the third week of January to hear what funding we'll receive from the state. So we'll know a lot more information as we approach the end of January as the board considers our budget. Staff, I don't know if you had any additional comments you wanted to make, and we certainly would entertain any questions prior to adopting superintendent's budget. From here, you will have additional time to develop your own budget, listen to input from the BARC Committee, Budget Advisory Review Committee, I think it's called. We'll have citizen input at a future board meeting and certainly encourage citizens to review the budget. It'll be online. Richard Wright will make sure it's posted and available to be online and people can commit and make comment about the budget. And then certainly we'll follow the budget processes that moves and we find out our state and local funding. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Is there a motion?
I'll agree.
Madam President, I move to adopt the superintendent's FY 2019 Recommended General Fund Budget as the Board of Education's FY 2019 Draft General Fund Budget.
Thank you, Mr. South. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Discussion, questions for staff? Now, we've had the opportunity to discuss and ask questions in two work sessions, one as early as this afternoon, if anyone has any questions, anything they'd like to say, comments that they'd like to make? If not, we'll call for the vote. Are there's in favor of adopting the superintendent's recommended general fund budget? Okay, thank you. The vote is unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. And we'll move on then to board member standing committee assignments. Our next item of business. You have in your packet of information, the recommended committee assignments for 2018. The Curriculum Instruction Committee consists of Linda Murray as chair, Wayne Ridenhour and Jacqueline Fisher as members. The Facilities Committee, Michael Guestford as chair, Stan Stalfer and Peter Bickford as members. The Finance Committee with Chair Peter Bickford and Members Stan Stalfer and Melissa Williams. The Human Resource Committee, Wayne Ridenhour as chair, Linda Murray and Michael Guestford as members. And the Policy Review and Development Committee, Jacqueline Fisher chair, Melissa Williams and Stan Stalfer as members. Those are the recommended committee assignments. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to, for board approval of the recommended standing committee assignments.
Thank you, Mr. South. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guestford. Any discussion? Are there's in favor of approving the recommended standing committee assignments? Okay, unanimous. Motion carries.
Madam President, if I may, you and I had discussed earlier putting together a schedule for those committees to meet, which I did, and I had consulted Mr. Guestford because I know he prefers to go not on Fourth Tuesday when most of the committees go. And I understand perhaps Mr. Bickford also wants to have a sort of a roving committee, is that?
Sure.
Then I believe the other three committees are still going to meet on the Fourth Tuesday
as we normally have. And I did put together a schedule, but, and I had Mr. Bickford listed for a particular specific time, but he can obviously change that. So I'm going to pass these down the line.
Please, thank you so much, Mrs. Fisher, for your efforts in putting this together. I know.
You're certainly welcome.
Putting together a schedule is a...
I tried to keep it so that originally when we had all five scheduled that as much as possible, you followed one committee right after the other so you didn't have to hang around all, all morning or all day, but...
Okay, we'll return then to the second half of Dr. Michael's report.
Tonight, I'm very excited to invite Laura Hanks, our supervisor of English Language Arts and Social Studies, as well as Carly Humphrey, our content specialist in elementary, and some other guests, some teachers. I'm going to have them introduce themselves here at Laura's discretion in a second. We're very excited about our reading effort this year. We've invested a great deal of time, particularly Carly and Laura have spent a lot of time along with Dr. Pugh and trying to educate me particularly on elementary reading and what's the best approach, why we're not having the success that we like to see, there's the students have, how we can reach more students, get them on grade level, above grade level, beyond grade level. And we've really put a lot of effort into this initiative this year. I want to thank our teachers. They have done an incredible job coming out to professional development this summer. An ongoing professional development that occurred in October and December and soon to occur again here in January, February, and you can hear about that in a few minutes, I don't want to share too much. But we are really excited about the participation we've had from the teaching staff, what we're seeing in the classrooms, and we're just confident that we're going to see substantial gain from our children in reading, not only this year, but in the coming years ahead as we stick to this effort. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Hanks.
All right, thank you very much for inviting us here tonight. We are excited about this workshop that we've been offering. Reader's Workshop is not something new, actually. The components of Reader's Workshop is a form of literacy instruction. And we offered a workshop this summer, a 10-hour workshop to teachers. We began with one session open to 30 teachers. By lunchtime of the day it opened, we had maxed the enrollment. We believe that after having hands in the curriculum for about two years and really understanding the rigor of what we're asking teachers to do and what students have to achieve to be successful and the need to personalize that instruction for every student, that it was time to really look at how are we going to get students to get to this level and how can we accommodate the varying needs of these students coming into us? And so this, a 10-hour workshop was offered first in June. We ended up adding another session, which also closed by the end of the summer. We had five sessions with over 370 teachers participating. So that was certainly a celebration. We'll tell you a little tonight what the workshop involved, but we also wanted to make sure that following the summer sessions, there were opportunities for teachers to come back together in a supported environment to talk about what was working or what challenges they still had and so that we could address those throughout the year. And that's those follow-up communities of practice that we're offering. And so you can see on this slide, in October, this is two hours after school, 170 teachers participated. In December, and we are talking the weeks just before Christmas, we had 148-plus teachers attend. And not only during this time do teachers attend, but we had lead teachers, we also had special educators, we had principals, assistant principals that were also participating in this work. So to best understand how we got to this point, when we initially began our roles several years ago and in curriculum development, we had many requests coming from different avenues and different teachers and different things happening throughout the building. And to know how we would support this or address the teachers' needs, we had to first establish what we truly believe consistently across Washington County about what literacy instruction is. And that's not just our personal beliefs. We looked at research across the board, 30, 40, 50 years of research on what it takes to teach students to read and read successfully. Using that, we developed our beliefs about literacy instruction and what all students deserve when they enter our schools in Washington County. Using research to develop those, we also presented it to principals, assistant principals, we presented it at every PG that we did with teachers and to schools to get lots of feedback. So that version that you have, I believe up at your seat, looks like this, is probably version 180 and has been used widely in the past two years. That is the foundation of all of our work, and so we share it with you tonight as well because it's the foundation of the efforts this summer, is if these are the things that we believe about literacy instruction, then what does it look like in the classroom? And what was most important in that, our actions, is the final one where we honor teacher expertise. What we knew is that our most accessible resource is the teachers in the classroom. And it is they who need the resources, they need the knowledge, they need the ability to make decisions on the spot with the children who are sitting in front of them. And so in knowing that they are the critical decision maker, our approach was what is it that we need to do for teachers to make sure that they are armed and prepared to make those decisions at any given time in the classroom to meet the individual needs of students?
And as you may know, there are Maryland College and Career Readiness Standards that we are held accountable to, and there are a few of those. Just in third grade, English Language Arts, you'll see the strands there, they total about 44 individual standards, just in English Language Arts. And then you add science and social studies and math, it becomes a lot of isolated skills that our teachers need to teach our students and that our students are measured by. And although we definitely need to break down every standard and understand even the little components within an individual standard, that can sometimes become overwhelming when you have a lot of isolated skills, knowledge that our students need to have. And so in our effort, we decided one of our goals of the workshop was to simplify. We need to simplify all of these little individual standards. How can we communicate what the true goal is? How can we get back to why? Why do we need to know all of those individual things? And so the efforts of the Reader's Workshop came with a goal that is on the screen. Students read and comprehend independently so they can react and respond to increasingly complex texts. All of the standards are embedded in that one statement. Because if our students can independently read and they're reading increasingly complex texts and then they're able to react and respond, and one of my favorite illustrations I shared even this summer, I was in a classroom at Hager, Jonathan Hager Elementary School last year, and I was reading with a couple of students and a little girl was in her cubby, in her little cubby with a book, and she was giggling. And I looked over at her and I started to give her my little teacher eye, like get back on task. And she looked at me and she said to me, this is so funny. And I said, I said, what is funny? And she said, my book. And I said, well, you can't just keep that to yourself, you need to share it with me. So the little girl I was reading with, we went over and together we giggled about this book. And that is what true reading is in the elementary schools, students diving into a book and then reacting to that and wanting to share it with somebody else. And that's what we do as readers. And as important as every single standard is, and it is extremely important, if we lose sight of that goal, it becomes too overwhelming. And so in our Reader's Workshop, we reminded them that that is the goal. When we have students giggling and reacting, responding, and even coming to tears and wanting to share things with others, then we have reached what we really want to reach. And so we do that through what we call and what research best practice does through what's called the gradual release of responsibility. And that's keeping the end in mind, keeping that, our end in mind. And then we say, so if that's what we want, we want students to react and respond to texts, what do we as teachers need to model? What do they need to see us doing? Then what do we need to do with them, shared with them in experiences? What do they need to practice on their own so that we can guide and coach them? And how can we release them so that they are able to do it independently? And that's really the premise of the entire Reader's Workshop.
So when we talk about beginning with the end in mind, the end goal again is that a student, when given any text, can read it independently, comprehend it, and react and respond to it, is our goal. And so that is how we opened our Reader's Workshop, with independent reading. It's often not looked at in that respect as in the past, independent reading is what students did while you did something else. It kept them busy. And what we shifted that to is independent reading is actually the goal of everything we're doing as teachers of reading. And so we wanted to make sure that teachers spent the first 30 days of the school year this year establishing a community of readers who love to read, who, there's a joy in them when you tell them it's time to read. And we asked them to spend, what would it look like after 30 days if you spent all the time making sure every child had just the right book, that they loved the book they were reading so much they were sharing it with each other? We talked in the workshop about what were the benefits to that and what were the drawbacks. So teachers had a chance to spend time planning that 30 days to create a community of readers. But what we learn in that time, and we asked teachers, and it came up at every single one of those sessions this summer, is what would we lose if all they did was enjoy reading for 30 days? And inevitably, somebody would say, well, they would never see a model of good reading. And what about when we had science or social studies? And all these elements, it said, okay, so we can't just get kids to love reading, we have to ask them to do more with it. And so in that first day, we talked about, all right, so what do we have to model for students? We spend 30 days watching our students read. We spend 30 days celebrating what they could do and looking for what direction we had to go as teachers. And then we went back into that 30-day plan and marked, all right, where do we have to model? What do we have to model for our students as readers so that they can see what next steps they're going to take as readers in the classroom? Teachers came back for day two and we talked about those, that shared opportunity. What is it that we have to practice with students in those first 30 days and do with them so that they start to gain those skills that they need? How do we align? There are standards that indicate a student at a certain grade level needs to know how to do this, so we're going to practice that with them. We're going to model it, we're going to practice it with them, then we're going to give them that, that's also done at grade level text. That's a new piece of information there, not new. It's kind of a bit old, but reintroducing that that shared reading is with grade level text, meaning that every student in Washington County was able to see grade level text every day in a shared experience that was non-threatening, something enjoyable for them to do with the teacher. And then opportunities with the text that students could read to have a coach right there. there with them, the teacher serves as the coach, and watches them try to do what they've done in the shared opportunity and what they've seen modeled. And in that time, that's the role of the teacher as a coach during guided reading. We also included elements of when children are doing their reading, the guided reading, the independent, they're trying to balance print and meaning. And so there has to be some instruction in word study. That gets personalized for students depending on where they are in their reading and what skills they need to move to the next level of reading. So we talked about personalizing word study instruction, and sometimes a missing bridge in a lot of classrooms is fluency. And that's, once you can decode, can you do it fluently so that you can focus as a reader on making meaning and comprehending? Any of those pieces missing creates gaps in students' ability to read and understand. And so fluency is how we closed out those two days, is how do you get students to do these things fluently, with ease, where they can spend most of that brain work when they're reading on comprehending, making meaning, so that they can react and respond to a text?
You'll see a chart that shows the number of participants this summer in each of our workshops, and you'll notice that that number increases. And we were very excited about that. We decided to even just close the limit, and anybody who signed up could attend. So our last session, all the way up to 105 teachers in the auditorium of Springfield Middle School. And you also see, one of the questions on the survey, we, for all of our professional learning, we give surveys, and this is just an example of, as you can tell, the top number there is, the information provided will allow me to move my practice forward, and most said very useful and others somewhat useful. So we had a lot of positive feedback from our teachers. And then we pulled a few of the comments because we also gave a chance for teachers to give us open feedback. And you'll notice on the feedback that is there, I won't read all of that to you, but on that first comment, there's a section there about using the strategies to teach an engaging curriculum, which again was our piece. You know, we've had a solid curriculum, and we believe we have a solid curriculum. We now need to just improve how we can interact with that and help our students achieve the expectations of that curriculum. Teachers sharing that they have a much better understanding and that it enhanced their knowledge. A few more comments, just saying that they are creating a community of readers. That is a comment from the summer. Since then, that, when we ask teachers, when we visit schools, when we ask principals, when we ask lead teachers, that is the number-one response, that they are so pleased with students enjoying reading. They look forward to reading, the joy and love of reading has seemed to come back into the classroom in a lot of ways. And that's another comment there on creating a culture. And then the last one, the teacher said, "I feel it is very positive." So those are just some comments from teachers this summer.
So we could have you take our word for it, but we thought we'd bring a couple samples in for you. We have two teachers who have participated not only in the 10 hours this summer, but they also attended our Communities of Practice. And so we asked them to come in and kind of share their experiences. We have Mrs. Bab at the end down there. She teaches first grade at Jonathan Hager Elementary School. And Mrs. Kelly Miller-Seacrest, who teaches fourth grade at Williams Ford Elementary School. So I'll let them, starting with Mrs. Bab, share their experience.
Well, this workshop totally has changed my way of teaching reading. It has inspired me, and my students are thriving because of it. I'll share, the first 30 days, I really developed that culture. And now, on day 74, when I say, "Okay, we need to close up reading," I have, "Oh, I don't want to, oh, I just want to read a little bit longer, I'm getting to a good part of the book, oh." So I feel like that culture is there, and that is so important. I have developed beautiful words on my glass. At Jonathan Hager, we have the ability to have all that glass. So my children, my students have decided from our read-aloud, where I am tackling the print, they're making meaning, and they're noticing beautiful words, vocabulary that they need to use the context clues to figure out. And we've made a list of fictional beautiful words and beautiful words from our nonfiction texts. The beautiful part of that is they are transferring that to their writing, they are noticing it in other texts, and they're saying, "Oh, my goodness, right here is blubber. We learned about that the other week." So I feel for my first-grade babies to pick up on that and their vocabulary to grow is just awesome. Though, one of the big pieces of the reading workshop is the shared reading. And so every day, my, I give them weekly a new complex text that they are using. And towards the end of the week, they start to annotate and come up with things that they feel is important. And then they take that information, and they have developed a book of knowledge that at the end of the year they'll take home, but it's all nonfiction text, and they write facts from their, from their shared readings. And I feel like they are personalizing it themselves, and they really enjoy doing that on Fridays. Then also, I've developed fluency. That's another big key component. After their shared reading, they go and they listen to me read a text four days a week, and then they do a video on CSOL. And then on Fridays, as we approach the third marking period, we're going to begin the reflection period where they go back and listen and see how they can improve from listening to themselves read. So they time themselves for a minute, and it really has increased their fluency. I have students that might only read 50 words a minute on day one, but by day four, they're reading close to 100 words a minute. And it's just another key component to get them reading to learn instead of learning to read. And last, that independent reading piece, they just are thriving. They love to read, and it's all because of the workshop and just getting involved and learning more how I can be, how I can become a better teacher and teach my students, and the love of reading is there. For example, I shared with Laura and Carly today, I did an assessment on a student, whereas we're approaching the second mark, end of the second marking period, I did a reading test. And this student started on a Level M, which is a second-grade level, that's where she was at the beginning of the year. In October, she advanced to a Level P, which is third grade, but now she is on a Level T, as in Tom, and close to a Level S, which is approaching fifth-grade level. So it's all because of that. Everyone is just enjoying reading. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Miller-Seacrest. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Williams Ford Elementary School. What I wanted to talk to you about is how this workshop has affected me. This summer, I went to this workshop. I have been teaching for 19 years, so I have a little bit of experience under my belt. And I have been through a lot when I first came into teaching in 1999. It was when the whole language approach was very, what do I want to say, there, I came to be, and it was the focus. And it was, as a new teacher, I would say, very wishy-washy, and I wasn't exactly sure how to teach the strategy to teach. Then we went through the Houghton-Mifflin phase with the basal, where it was very structured. And I had to be on a certain page at a certain time. I could not die from any of my, any plans that were creative on my own. So I've been through the whole spectrum of the teaching of reading. And this summer, I had the opportunity to go to this workshop. And the very first thing I did is I got in my car after the workshop and I drove to my school. And I went in to see my principal, Dr. Palmer, and I said, "That was by far the best workshop I have ever had in 19 years." And I said, "I am so inspired by what I did." And I had the opportunity, that I was going to be teaching summer school two weeks after this workshop, and I said, "I want to cancel what I have planned, and I want to do what I've learned." And that enthusiasm and that passion that was restilled in me, and I had the opportunity this summer to try out some of the strategies and try out some of the techniques that they had talked about. What I like with it is that it gives me a structure on what I should be teaching and ideas for how to do it, but I still have that creativity to make it my own. And that is such a balance for me, having that years of experience. I wanted to make, wanted to make it my own. I want to invest in it, but I also want to have that love for it. In my classroom this year, I have, I go to work every day, and the very first thing when they walk through that door is, "When is it time to read?" Or, "Look at the book I'm reading, I can't wait to share it with you." And we spend the whole day talking and reading books and reacting and responding. The biggest compliment I got was the day before Christmas, I had set up a tree in my classroom, and there was presents underneath the tree. And when they came in, they said, "I hope it's a book." And when they opened up, I had a student, he said, he came up to me and he hugged me, and he goes, "This is even better than the iPad that I had wished for." And to have those type of responses is to know that something is being done right. I commend them because I go to these workshops, and I am, even after a long day at work, I am taking in all the information and wanting to try it out the next day with my students. In fact, I will go to them, like, "I learned this, let me show you what I learned last night, and I want to do it with you." And that type of enthusiasm and love for what I'm doing has been renewed, and I wanted to just commend, it has been through this reading workshop.
So this summer, with the 10 hours of workshop, we know that they did a lot of learning, there were a lot of ahahs. And when you learn new things and you are reminded of things, sometimes when you get back into, now I have 30 kids, 25 kids in front of me I have to teach, sometimes you need a little bit of encouragement along the way. And so we built in structured Communities of Practice. And so again, in October, you've already seen the numbers of teachers that we had. And really, what we do is we begin with letting them share what is working, what is challenging, how can we, how have you overcome any of your challenges? Share with the grade level of teachers across the county and learn from one another. And then Laura and I, we do our best to be out into the buildings and to listen and to observe. And when we see the challenges, we then share strategies and new strategies that they can hopefully use the very next day to help them with any of those challenges.
So again, as exciting as it is that we hear that students love to read, the point is that when we have students who are reading, we can now teach them. And that was one of the largest obstacles we had. If they're reading, they're teachable. And so our goal is really to create literate students who joyfully react and respond to texts, who are okay saying, "I didn't like that one so much, but I really liked that one." And to be able to cite evidence, and you can see how, as students talk, those standards come to life, to be able to view multiple perspectives, to be able to cite evidence from what they read to defend what they're saying. They're learning how to communicate with each other and prove their points in text. And so what we're hoping for is, yes, improved achievement on our state testing, but that we're looking forward to as a consequence of this, but not the ultimate goal. So I, in all of this, there are, as Carly had mentioned, definite people that we do want to honor and thank. The staff and custodial staff at Springfield Middle School was so responsive. We would call them within week's notice. "We're now up to 105, we need to move to the auditorium." They had things scheduled in there and were able to move things around for us. Our technology department was incredible. I'm not sure if 105 people can all access the wireless in this one room. They were coming out with hubs. We didn't have a flaw. With this type of response with teachers, there was not a flaw in any of the PD, which made it look like we were rock stars. That wasn't ours. That was those behind us. And what we were doing again is not the Laura and Carly show. What we're sharing is best practices over 30, 40, 50 years. And we know, and teachers know, when they hear, yes, that is how we were taught, that is how we know students respond to teaching, how does it look in practice? And how can we work together, collaborate, using the curriculum to bring it to life in this format? And so that's why we wanted to move on with next steps. We don't want to end it there. It is exciting to see the response from teachers, excited to come back. Many teachers are coming back with their teams, they're coming as whole teams, their administrators are joining them. We're going to continue the ongoing individualized support to schools that we've been offering. We also address the needs monthly with principals and lead teachers in those meetings that we have to continue to say, "How can you support this moving forward? What the role?" And to be responsive to principals as well with questions for lead teachers. We want to continue over the summer to invite teachers that may not have been able to participate last summer or would like to, again, to offer that workshop again for teachers as a refresher. But we're also looking at developing a Part Two. And we're going to be using some of these teachers who have been engaged in it throughout the year to design Part Two. But that would involve things like writing and really enhancing, how do you transition this to be strong writers? As students are talking about this, that translates very easily right to the writing. We also want to look at the integrated literacy instruction. The more students read, the more genres that they're addressing, and we really have an authentic opportunity to integrate instruction with the sciences, the social studies, and to look at that disciplinary literacy and to really hone in on some of those skills that are unique to certain disciplines. We actually also want to lead in, one of the main focuses was elementary. If you look at our data, about 50% of our students are moving into middle school, not reading grade level. And that was the first thing we had to address. Our secondary English teachers do a phenomenal job. If you take a look at, we are at the bottom of our KRA data, our students are coming in very low. We have a 91.1% graduation rate. They do a phenomenal job over the time that they're here in our school system. If we can close those gaps a little sooner for our students, imagine what we can do. Where our secondary teachers really should be focusing on literary analysis and disciplinary literacy and not necessarily the skill of how to teach them to read. So we want to be able to take this, expand it into secondary, that gradual release model, offer that same support to secondary. But we're also hoping with each year, our teachers are going to start to see some really strong readers coming into their classrooms.
Any questions for the team at all? This is something we've been talking about since the summer. I think I've mentioned a couple times during my superintendent reports, how encouraged I've been by the teacher participation and the work of the team to, you know, to really put an emphasis on reading, focus on reading. The teacher collaboration, them being involved as partners in this effort, I think has been a huge part of its success. You don't get 370 teachers to voluntarily show up. Now granted, they were paid for 10 hours, but it doesn't go from one workshop with 30 participants to 370 or 80 participants. You don't get people to come back in the fall with 140, 50 people coming to a workshop, especially I was at, I guess it was at the October 1 and the December 1, we had a couple different nights, like K1, 2, 3, 3, 4 night. And it was just amazing to see people give up a shopping night really close to Christmas. And I think I was one of our largest groups, like the next, last week before the Christmas break. I'm very, very confident, I'm really encouraged by what our two teachers shared tonight, their experiences and what the children are actually saying to them. And I can almost tell a little emotion from each of you of how passionate you are about teaching the children to read, but then to have the success of seeing them read and grow and to learn is what, you know, what all of us as teachers get excited about. I mean, it's why you become a teacher, you kind of knock your head against the wall and you feel like this child is never going to learn, and then suddenly the light bulb comes on, it's, it's really rewarding, and that's the blessing of teaching. That's what I've found anyhow, and I can see it in our teachers today. So they'd be glad to answer any questions. I want to thank the team for coming tonight and to share the, this is a little bit about what I've been passionate about, what I've been sharing and trying to encourage, but I mean, the success is just breeding success, and I'm just very confident we're going to see it in our students. And we'll have some children come next time. I think that'd be exciting to hear from a couple of them. They won't understand the reading workshop, but they can talk about their journey as readers in maybe the course of a year or something like that. So thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
You know, the comment I wanted to make tonight, I'm very excited, on Thursday, Dr. Pugh's going to kick off our Future Careers in Technology. We really don't have a complete title for it yet, but really involves computational thinking, kind of a new terminology. It's everything robotics, artificial intelligence, coding, critical thinking, problem solving, all those pieces that are kind of all the buzzwords right now. I mean, our world is changing right before our eyes, it's moving very quickly. You know, how are we, as Washington County Public Schools, how are we preparing our students for future careers, for preparation for jobs that are going to continue to change and change and change? And how are we helping our children be successful? So Dr. Pugh's kicking off the focus group on So Dr. Pugh's kicking off the focus group on Thursday. We're going to have several of these, one on Thursday involves business and educational leaders. But over the next six or eight months, we're going to try to pull together a plan that we will pretty much do pre-K to twelve, as well as three or four new innovative programs that I hope to kick off in the nineteen-twenty school year. So we'll probably be asking about renovating some spaces, curriculum for some new programs, and these would be, lack of other words, cutting-edge type technology programs to really move forward our students for these future jobs in technology. So excited about that, that kicks off this week. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. That brings us to personnel action. Dr. Bishop?
Good evening, Dr. Michael, Mrs. Williams, Mr. Stauffer, and elected board members. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Prue, the personnel actions presented earlier today.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenar. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any question, questions? Are those in favor of personnel actions presented? Yeah, thank you. Seven to zero, motion carries.
Thank you, and Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. On to you. That brings us to committee reports. And I don't believe we've had any committees meet since our last meeting. That's not true. Facilities met today. I'm so sorry, Mr. Gesper.
We met today.
At eight o'clock this morning. Okay.
But I will say that the report that we talked about today, we'll go ahead and do a report at the next meeting. But we did have our facilities meeting this morning for the first year, and then we'll start with our new committee assignments after the next.
Thank you. Thank you. Tonight, we did receive our new committee assignments for the board's standing committees. And at this time, I'd like to make our public aware that in addition to the board's standing committees, we have citizens advisory committees. And the purpose of those committees is to provide this board with recommendations on certain matters. So if there's anyone who's interested in applying for a position on one of these advisory committees, and I'd like to take a minute and make you aware of what those committees are. There's the Budget Advocacy and Review Advisory Committee, there's the Calendar Advisory Committee, Citizens Advisory Council, the District Technology Planning Advisory Committee, the Ethics Advisory Panel, the Facilities and Enrollment Advisory Committee, the Family Life Advisory Committee, the Finance and Audit Review Advisory Committee, and the Safe School Advisory Committee. So these are important committees to this board, and we are hopeful that there are folks out there who would be willing to apply by filling out an online application. That online application can be found by going to Washington County Public Schools website at www.cpsmd.com, clicking on School Board in the main navigation, and then to Committees on that page. We're hopeful that we'll have some interested citizens apply, and we look forward to receiving those applications. So thank you for considering applying for one of the advisory committees. Under miscellaneous business, future agenda items you have in your packets, those proposed agenda items. Coming up at our next meeting, we have an update on the William Bush Planetarium and an update, quarterly healthcare update. We have legislative briefings coming up in February and March, and an update on the Claude Kitchens Outdoor School in March. There's an agenda item of interest to any board member, please let Mr. Stauffer, Dr. Michael, or me know of it, and we'll bring it to the Agenda Planning Committee. And we'll move on then to board member comments. Mr. Ridenar, would you like to begin? Oh, thank you. Mrs. Fisher? That might be hard to do.
Right.
Mr. Gesper?
I have nothing.
Just like to say that prior to Christmas vacation, I attended the concert of the Wind Ensemble, the various choirs at Williams Ford High School, the concert band and the orchestra, and a very fine concert. But the thing of it was, every bit of money raised was donated to the American Red Cross, and I forget the exact amount, but somewhere between fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars was donated to the Red, American Red Cross.
Mr. Bickford? Mrs. Murray?
Nothing.
Mr. Diallo?
Nothing.
Happy New Year, everyone. As Mrs. Fisher advises, stay warm. Meeting adjourned.